Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
Great job.
I am Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town and Row Playing and Zoning Commission. This is our regular meeting. It is June the 15th. It is 7:02 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds. Thank you. We will now call the rolls, starting on my right.
David Xerolino, Alternate Commissioner.
How many need your alternate commission?
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
The Enid Brose, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, Alternate Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Planning and Zoning Administrator. And Mr. Chairman, we have James DeMayo on remote, the Newtown Engineer. James?
Yep, good evening, everybody. My name is James DeMayo. I'm the Newtown Engineer for the Town of Monroe. So I'm here to assist in any way I can for you guys.
Welcome to our evening. Our town. Sarah?
Sarah Strad, Reporting Secretary.
Thank you. Everyone's here. It's time for the general public participation. If anyone in the audience or online would like to address the Commission regarding any matter not before the Commission presently, please let yourselves be known. Raise your hand. Come on forward. Do we have someone? No, I didn't know if he's... I don't know. I'm sorry.
About Kathy Lindstrom from Guinea Road. And I was here to talk about something else, but as long as I'm here, we'll talk about my favorite subject, which is zoning enforcement. I've heard that you were going to be getting reports from the zoning enforcement officer regularly. I used to have, when I was on the Commission, I worried you had been getting reports.
They're monthly.
So you will be getting...
She's not here today, so we're probably not getting them.
We have been getting them. Regularly.
As I've been driving around, I still see the same old, same old signs.
It's a work in progress.
And also, the building out the corner of Main Street and Route 59, debris is still there, more trucks are parked. I pass it every day. It's just a thorn in my side because I see it constantly. Building's gonna fall down. It's just plain gonna fall down. I'm not doing any work on it. There's gotta be something that can be done about that. And may I ask a question? So the public hearing on the...
Restricted.
Zoning, that has been postponed?
Till July 6th.
Can I speak to that or not?
No.
No, okay. All right, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online or in person that would like to comment on or question the Commission? All right, seeing none, we'll move to our public hearings. We're gonna switch around the order. First, the RA 2023-03, File 1026E. This is the zone change, language change. This is gonna be continued to 7/6. Anybody who's here for that, not till our next meeting. Now, we're gonna switch the ZCA with the EFP. So we'll start with the EFP 2023-01, File Number 111, 125 Barter Road. This is continued from June the 1st.
Mr. Chairman, we have one new exhibit, Exhibit Number 4, The Blasting Plan, which all the Commissioners have received, dated...
May I ask questions?
5223, submitted by Solely Engineering. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Evening, everyone. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Chris Blaski. We're here here at Catholic Solely Engineering. Office is located in Town of Monroe, 501 Main.
I'm cracking myself up today.
He's telling me it's working, Chris.
Chris, you broke the computer?
I'm chairman.
I did that.
My screen. So last time we were before you, we went through the application pretty thoroughly. We wanted to give the Commissioners a chance to review the material. We also, in the last two weeks, have submitted the blasting plan, pre-blast survey, radius map, which shows all the pre-blast surveys and monitoring put in place. It also provides details of when they're blasting, how they're blasting, who's gonna be blasting on all sorts of that. That should be in the packets before you. None of the plans have been modified since we originally moved before you a week ago. And we did this with a comment from the Health Department, which basically had to do with the future residential plan, which we are pursuing this excavation build permit as a first step to. They basically said that in the future, when we do come forth for that subdivision plan, it's gonna have to be additional soil testing, engineering plans as part of the application. We are in full agreement with that comment. I don't have much to present otherwise. I'll be happy to answer any questions or questions they have.
Thank you. All right, so let's go with the Commissioners. So I'll start on my right.
No new questions for me.
No new questions?
Is 16 Applegate Lane on the... gonna be on the pre-blast survey? It's like right at that cusp.
If it's on the cusp, it definitely will include it. I think we're actually probably gonna be including all of Applegate Lane. I think there was a request from someone who came in a couple of weeks ago. So that's something that we're gonna be doing here.
Yeah, it's the one all the way south, and it's technically north.
Yeah, I think it's this one right here.
Okay, that one too. I was talking about the other one too.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're only gonna work Monday through Friday, right? Sundays, right?
Then it's got no holidays in there.
You plan to run this whole operation from NA? When do you plan on doing all the crushing?
The crushing is 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM? No, no. The operation will take place from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We're the standard hours of the list, but then there's restricted hours on we can blast. I believe they're 10:00 to 3:00.
10:00 to 3:00.
10:00 to 3:00.
It says 9:00 to 3:00.
9:00 to 3:00, my apologies.
I thought it was gonna be 10:00 to 3:00.
We can change that.
We're gonna make it 10:00 to 3:00? We're gonna crush between 10:00 and 3:00?
Yes.
That's not on here?
I believe we'll be crushing most of the day, so that would be actually...
This is the blasting plan?
Right, this is the blasting. So the blasting will only take place from 10:00 to 3:00.
Do you want to add anything about the crushing? You don't have a problem with the crushing 10:00 to 3:00, right?
No, it shouldn't.
It shouldn't be.
Put that on the application.
Yeah.
I'm good.
So after reading the blasting plan, I noticed here that there is the blast warning for the three bursts, but we had talked in the last meeting about having notifications sent out.
That's correct. So it's not a requirement from the... it's not written law, if you will, but we're going to be doing that. We're also gonna be providing onsite contact to all the neighbors in the vicinity, so they could... they have someone they can direct phone to.
Yeah, and I'd like, you know, a call, text, or email, or all three, you know?
Correct.
Everybody can be in for anybody on that list.
Absolutely.
So if that couldn't get drawn in here somewhere, just... that'd be great.
Yeah, we'd be happy to have that.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
What do you want to go? I think we could put that on our approval, right? That they have to go to us people. They would have to... we could put that on our approval that we'd have to notify. You got that written down?
Yeah.
But we have one for that.
Indicial.
Change right here.
Yeah, okay, it's happening. Do that.
All right, and you say this is gonna be two years?
Yeah, only two years.
Years, and you're gonna give us quarterly reports?
Correct. Get your monthly report.
The Commission, the town, I want the town... I want the Commission to have quarterly reports, just not the town, still, right?
Yep, we'll provide them.
A quarterly, having the house materials taken out, house party events, and if the project is done, then we're good.
Understood. We will figure that.
And you're gonna... basically you say you're gonna turn that into residential right after?
Correct. There's a plan before you. It's a potential development plan. It's basically a four or five subdivision, includes an incursion space.
So that's gonna be submitted right after this?
That's correct. We...
All right. We're public. This is just the continuation for public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight, or is there anyone online? I would like to comment on this application, either for or against, or neither. Just raise your hands. No one online? No one here? Okay. Then you're ready to close the hearing?
Yes, no more questions. You're like to close the hearing. Thank you.
Guys have any other questions before we...
No.
Okay, then we'll close the hearing. Move on. Second public hearing, ZCA/RA 2023-03, this is 1036 Main Street. This is our second MDD. It's an STD. This is continued from 6123. So the applicant again, Chris?
On behalf of the applicant, it's Chris Blaski, Solely Engineering, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. We're Solely Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street in Town of Monroe. And Kevin Solely will be joining us as well in just a second.
And Mr. Chairman, the following new exhibits were submitted since the last public hearing are number five, a continuance letter from Solely Engineering, six, revised traffic plans, and number seven, revised site development plans. That is all, Mr. Chairman?
There we go. All right, so last time we were before you, we presented, on behalf of Town of 36 Main Street, we are seeking the second STD town, as you all are familiar from the view of 1036 Main Street was the first STD. So here before you for zone change slash regulation amendment application. Again, just to orientate everyone, located... we're located on Route 25, right at the edge of the trouble number quarter here. Assuming the property is key properties currently, 10 Main Street, 36 Main Street, side by side. This is an aerial from about 2018, if you recall, back in 2021. We moved the operation build permit for the properties. That work has commenced. At this time, now we're moving on to the development stage where the building is... So this is the rendering, what the site's gonna look like post-traffic. So since we were last before you, we made a few changes. Number one, we've completed a traffic impact study. We've submitted our first step in the process to the DOT. Kevin Solely will be here shortly and will discuss more on that. But as part of the revised plans before you, we did show potential off-site improvements that we're gonna be doing as part of the project. So if you will look at the rendered plan on the screening, you're gonna notice that we're gonna be widening 25 significantly here and adding an additional turning lane into the property. And then you're also gonna be adding an additional turning lane coming southbound and turning into the property. You'll also see the installation of a new traffic signal in this part of town, Route 25 and Main Street. We will also be completing sidewalks all along the frontage. And we also have been discussing with Neighbor here, and we are looking to connect pedestrian access as well. So those talks are currently ongoing. We'll obtain connectivity between parcels. Offsite plan, we've completed a traffic study, impact study, is coming before you. Kevin will be here shortly to discuss that. Other than that, we did just revise the plans to show that offsite work. So the 2.10, the overall site plan you see before you, now showcases that left-hand turn lane coming to the site, the traffic signal, and then the right-hand turn lane. We're also gonna be deeding land right away to kind of get DOT to accomplish this. There will be sidewalk that again goes along the frontage. In order to cross the sidewalk across our site, we need to give land to the DOT. So their right-of-way is gonna be widening. Again, it's just good pedestrian access. At this time, we do not have access to Victoria Drive. We are currently pursuing that access and have been trying to engage the owners of that parcel, but have not received access as of yet. But it is something that we are actively trying to pursue. And again, this is just the first step in the STD process, though we hope. And after those preliminary stages, when we come through with the final special permit plans, that we do have that access and we are connected with Victoria Drive. That is the ultimate goal of the project, so... This is our grading plan here, just again, some minor modifications to account for the sidewalk, we're grading down approximately 6 feet on the road here. There's gonna be some paths in the front here, which I'll get to in a second, but otherwise, most of the grading stayed the same throughout the site. This is our set-up path we planned. So again, you'll notice this is a grocer, it's along the front here, the quick serve restaurant, the set-ups are up along the front there. And then the other quick serve restaurant pad, again, the set-ups are in the front. And then for the mixed-use retail and self-storage building, we got set-ups down at the back. This is our revised landscape plan. We added some more shrubbery, if you will, along the front. Now that we know where our potential sidewalk's gonna be in our roadway widening, we added some additional plantings along the entrance to kind of present a aesthetic when you come into the property. Otherwise, the rest of the landscape may trees throughout the site remain the same. So we did present or provide a revised text language before you as part of this. There are a couple of changes that I wanna run through quick. We did slightly modify and set backs at district limits. And the reason we did that is when we provide the right-of-way to the DOT, it essentially shifts our property line. So this line right here, which is showcasing our current property line, in order to accommodate the sidewalk and roadway widening, we have to give basically this rectangle right here to DOT. So as part of that, our front property line is shifting forward. Now, there's a regulation in Town of Monroe zoning regs where you cannot permit a drive-through within the front setback. So we did reduce that requirement for this specific STD application. And again, the regulations that you have before you are specific to this property only, if you will. But I just wanted to talk through why you see that changing for you. And again, we have to give land to the DOT. So by moving this line towards our property, the drive-through that you see here now essentially is in that, would be in that minimal setback required. So that change is presented in the text that we did provide, I believe, a week ago. I'd be happy to answer any questions. So this is the text right here, so minimum setbacks at district limits. You'll see the front yard setback change. We also did change the rear yard, the side yard slightly, again, just to make sure we have enough room to accommodate those drive-throughs. These regulations here, the only change here was we updated the plan, so we have the correct revised date here in the description. So Kevin will not be here yet, but I will briefly touch on the traffic analysis that we did conduct. So Penn 36 Main Street is located here. As part of our traffic impact analysis, we studied several points, if you will. So the first point that we studied was the intersection of Jug Road, Route 5, and Hurdy Hill. Second point that we studied as part of our traffic study was the intersection of Route 25 and Victoria Drive. The third point that we studied as part of our traffic study was intersection of Old Term Road, Route 25, and potential driveway, where the new traffic signal will be located. The next point of interest that we studied for our traffic study was Spring Hill Road and Route 25. And then the final point of interest that we studied for our traffic study was Attac Pool Road and Route 25. So we are analyzing five key locations as part of our traffic study. As I mentioned before, we're setting a traffic signal, we're widening the road. There's going to be additional turn lanes coming through here. This is a significant financial investment our clients putting forth, talking about $1 million in roadway improvements as part of this project. So we are, again, we're only in the first stages of the process with the DOT. We're excited to see where that goes, but as of now, we did present that traffic study or submit that traffic study before you. The plan is the sidewalks, the additional land being deeded to the DOT, the widening of Route 25, the additional turn lanes. And again, that investment is about $1 million in roadway improvements as part of the site. Let's see here. So again, this is just our site rendering. And you can see those additional lanes widening and the additional traffic signal, and all the plantings that we're doing as part of the project. I think that's all. Yeah. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
We're not gonna be closing the hearing tonight. It's ready for the traffic study.
Oh, no, we've submitted the traffic study.
Oh, we got the traffic study?
Yes.
No, but I am requesting that the Commission continue. After tonight's meeting, I have a scheduled meeting with the police in file.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna keep the hearing going?
I wait for the Commission to start discussion on the traffic report, comments from the public, and then I take it to the police and file.
Okay.
That's worked out quite well in that order.
All right, then let's go with the Commissioners. Commissioner Lupo. Ooh, first.
So in the... where the middle fast food restaurant is, Chris, where it's gonna be in the right-of-way, is there any effort to put that building back to get it out of the... that front border or the front line?
So unfortunately, we pushed the building back. We don't need the minimum lot or drive pile requirements.
Okay.
If that makes any sense. So right now, we're just about an acre from this parcel to the setback. You can see this dark line here. So we're about an acre from this parcel.
Okay.
So when we push the... if we push this up, per se, it would be less than an acre. You essentially can't move this more. We're gonna cut into this parcel's area.
Okay.
If that makes any sense. And then we'd also lose parking right there itself. So unfortunately, that's why we are making that modification. And again, it is associated with the drive-through.
Drive, okay.
The buildings aren't gonna be located with a setback. The drive-through would be if we don't have this modification, so...
Do we have any idea yet for the hours of operation are gonna be here? I don't know if we know who's gonna be in here yet, but...
Not at liberty to say, but it would be standard QSR, we'll call it quick service restaurant hours, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay.
But there is several interesting parts at this point.
So I think I blanked that for a second, but... so Victoria Drive at the moment, there's no exit or entrance on or off Victoria Drive at the moment?
That is correct. We designed the site to act independently, so the trucks can circulate throughout the property, you can make the turn. But it is our goal and our hope that we are to, here in Victoria, but unfortunately, it's out of our hands, it's out of the patent assets in the property owners at this point.
So the restaurant to the right, whatever that's gonna be?
This one right here?
Yeah. So is there only one entrance and exit on the...
So they have a right turn in only, and then they have a two-way in and out to get back to the main drive here.
There's enough room for the trucks to get in and out? It just looks kinda tight from here, but...
Yeah, I mean, most of your fast food deliveries are, you know, SC40s or the smaller trucks. But it should be able to accommodate in the grocery stores where you begin to W67, 75-foot drive trailers, and the site's definitely gonna accommodate those tiny movements. They actually made some modification. We're going through the design process to make sure we have enough room for the trucks to get in and out.
I may have missed this in a previous meeting, but is there gonna be any charging stations for the electric cars?
There should be, I believe, as a... I don't know if there's a requirement, I know there is a residential, but I know most of the grocery stores in the area, if you will, have EV stations, and I'm sure that... I can't say for certain, because again, it's a tenant thing, but I wouldn't be surprised if there were. I'd say that, so...
No other questions right now? Thank you.
So the discussions with access to Victoria Drive favorable, would you say, at this point?
I wouldn't say that at this point. I mean, they're just... it's... they're slow-moving, is what I would say. Unfortunately, the property owner that is next door is a large corporation, so it's difficult to... if that makes any sense.
I don't see any reason in the world why they would wanna add additional traffic onto their roadway, which is gonna slow the ringers and eggers and basically slow down their facility. So I don't see that happening. I mean, I basically think we have to base our decision off of a, you know, a no as far as access to that road.
Correct, which is why we've designed the site to... yeah, that's a good point. And we've designed the site to stand on its own. We're not banking or depending on that big part of the drive.
Yep.
Okay.
I just fear we'll make the Commission aware of the fact that's not gonna happen. You know, if it happens, great.
Right.
But, you know, it doesn't...
I wanna put it out there, there's other ways and means to monetary valiums and things of that nature to kind of proceed those talks or push those talks along, but I'm... at this point, I don't have an answer.
I like the roadway improvements. You know, that's actually designed really nicely. How long do you anticipate this being in DOT's hands?
So there's four steps, far as I understand, and we've submitted, and the step one is before them. That takes about two months. And then there... then they come back, and then you really get into the nitty-gritty design at that point, if that makes any sense. And then we hope to be before you with, you know, a better look of who the tenants are, you know, the second step in the STD process, if that makes... So that kind of timing matches up for like this fall, if you will. And then at that point, then it's another four to six months for them to do a deep dive of the plans. And there's also an additional group that you're probably talking like six to eight months to really get a firm grasp on exactly what those original improvements are gonna look like and how they're gonna review. But they'll have at least some initial comments on our traffic study in hopefully the next two months.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Mr. Monroe, you said that's the one change here. Where are these setbacks you wanna change?
So...
I don't hear, you said it was more?
Yeah, so I... we've changed the front yard setback, at least around the 50 feet. We're changing that to 30. And again, there's not gonna be a building in that setback. It's for the drive.
Right, so how far is the building setback?
I'm sorry?
How far is the building setback from here? Because it changes.
The building setback is... there would be still beyond 50 feet, I believe, so if we look. So the front yard... the front yard setback is this dash line currently. Right now, I believe that says 50 feet. So we're proposing 30 feet, and it's because this is becoming the new property line when we give the land to DOT. And as part of that, now this setback is gonna push back. And now the drive-through, which is the lanes right here, is in that front yard setback. So the building, so there's two 12-foot drive-through lanes, so the building would still be beyond 50 feet, but the drive-through would be in the front yard setback.
Why not move the drive-through?
As I mentioned before, if we move the drive-through, we are now will no longer be in the parking requirements or the minimum acreage. Because we had to shrink, we had to essentially push this entire building to the rear.
Well, no, I mean, the drive-through to the rear, no?
You mean, so the drive-through, so the way the site currently operates is you pull into main access drive and come here, and then you circulate here, and it's a one-way around now.
Right.
So I apologize, I... it's... from a design standpoint and an operation standpoint, we can't flip the driveway.
So these are all gonna be individual lots that are sold?
At this standpoint, they're... that can meet the individual requirements, but they can function as individual lots in the future.
That's what I'm saying, so they're gonna be...
Potentially.
Potentially, a lot.
At this point in time, I don't believe that's the plan, but it could.
That's what I'm saying, because you can move the lot lines anywhere you want, on this plan.
Right, within reason.
Within reason.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, so... we're also... that was only setback we were talking about.
So we're also changing the side yard setback, but, and that has to do with the drive thru.
The same thing with drive thru, too?
This one is dependent on the drive thru. And then there's also, we just wanted to give ourselves some room with retaining walls. So if you look in the back of the grocery here, there's a large retaining wall behind the grocery. And if you see the setback coming right up to the current setback, so we reduced it by five feet. In order, just to give us some, the wall was built, we don't want it to be through the setback. Monroe has a regulation that you can't have a wall higher than six feet through the setback. Again, these reductions in the setbacks will only apply to this STD.
I've been saying, because they're individual lots, I mean, we could move the lots, right?
We, at this point, this is the arrangement we've included. It's the best.
I'm saying is that, you know. I just think about like, because it looks like they're going to be individual lots. You're going to sell these off individually. That's exactly what's going to be, that'd be, because it's, it's to development, I mean. They're going to be individual lots.
Um, Kevin Solis for the record. The intent is to create independent, these simple parcels. I'm not necessarily going to sell them off, but probably mostly tied to financing, because each pad or parcel will be essentially either leased to a tenant or potentially sold to a potential tenant. So the, you know, we had provisions in the special development district language that basically allowed for interior setbacks from interior lots within the overall STD heads of flexibility. And then these other changes that Chris mentioned are really to the perimeter of the outside of the lot. So again, it's really only for the perimeter lines.
And so do we, do we have people that are already interested in these two pieces up front here?
The developers in conversations with a number of potential tenants. There haven't been any leases signed or anything like that, so they're still subject to change. And again, from a, from a process standpoint, this is the initial plan development, sort of the PDD or STD application. So this master plan approval allows us to kind of proceed to the next steps. And this was something that was important for us to get started on, obviously. Because we wanted to memorialize what our overall intent is for the project, but it also helps us get a head start on our DOT and review. So we've actually, I'm not sure how much, Chris spoke to that one. We've actually been, and our volumes have actually been approved or moved on to step two.
Because I was asking him, you know, about the drive thru, I mean, I didn't think maybe you could make it in the back or. What it is?
Which, for which one? Because again, because these are kind of placeholders.
Right, you got C and then parcel A, right? You're worried about this drive thru?
Yeah.
Correct.
Both are going to have drive thru's?
Correct. Well, let's see, that's the desired intent.
No, so you need. Side lot, how much do you need off of that? For a side, it's 30, right, right now?
It's 50, and they're going down to 30.
The front yard is just the 50, just the front yard. The side yards are.
You're going with the side yard?
Yeah.
You said there's three spots you're changing. One in the rear of, I guess, parcel D, right?
Yep.
Yep. And then where else?
Front. The production front, and that really actually accommodated the ability to green additional land to the DOT.
Yeah.
Accommodate for the right away?
Yeah.
And where is the side yard, Chris? Is that just for this wall on this corner here?
Oh, dude.
Yeah, so that's actually, so we have a side yard here, and just based on where the grades are, the road here is higher, so this is going to kind of ramp down.
Yeah.
So we had, just to accommodate this dumpster enclosure, we had a small wall immediately around it, and that would be within that.
Setback, okay. This is only going to be, we're allowed to do this for one application, right?
Yeah, because this is a, yeah, it's, it lives within this special development district.
Yeah. And then what's up, you're going to screen a little bit more around that drive thru?
Oh, of course, yeah. And we do have a landscape plan in part, because we did have some. We can, yeah.
That's all, yes, you know, up there. No questions.
I'm good.
No questions or answers? Okay. Rick, did you have anything?
Uh, no, I think, uh, most of the commissioners have conveyed their thoughts. As I indicated, I'm going to take this to the police, fire, and to the town engineer and review all of the documents that were submitted. All right, then we'll go to the public, see if there's any members of the public here tonight. Any members of the public here tonight? Who want to comment on this application? Joe, no, this is, just to establish the, say, a STD. They'll be back more. I'll see anybody in line, anybody here? Commissioners, any other questions?
Nope.
Right. Chris, do you have any, Dave, Yandros?
That's it?
Back when.
We want to, we're going to get the answer to this.
Yeah, we looked alive, receiving the report.
Yeah, July 6th, I'm anticipating any significant issues, and staff will be prepared to prepare a resolution, too.
Okay, good.
See you then, in a few weeks.
Two weeks? Ending applications, deliberations, deliberations, all right, so let's deliberate. Sorry, so deliberations on this, we have the regular five commissioners. But before you, we have three. Oh, drafts.
Three drafts?
Yes, we have three. Let's start on 125 Garter Road, since that's run the draft. We have a draft EFP approval, which is. All right, so on this approval, we have other conditions that we want to add in. Mr. Chairman, we want to add the blasting and crushing limited to the hours of 10:00 AM, 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. There is no scale house, remember.
No scale house.
We want enhanced notifications. To reduce the excavation from 109 to 86,185. A daily log of all exported material, and a quarterly log will be provided to the zoning enforcement officer. That's what we're doing right now. It works out pretty well. And the other projects, yes.
Reports here.
Yeah. You receive the blasting plan, and you want notifications to go to the property owners. Enhanced notifications.
Right.
Not just the.
Taking blasting.
Is that something, side note, that we can look at adding to the regulations in the future? Because it's very nice that they agreed to do that, but, you know, future projects might not, this, can we maybe, the subcommittee take?
Pick that up at the subcommittee level.
Might. Fire marshal's office.
And we'll invite the fire marshal.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, just to have something along those lines as opposed to just a horn going off.
All right, so those three or four additional requirements.
Two-year, right, you got that in there?
Two-year, yes. No extensions. Anything else that commissioners would like to see? Oh, yeah, I'm just looking at you.
Oh, yeah. Got the well in there? Rick?
The well?
The well, it's both here.
It's.
The feed crusher.
Yeah, installation of well for water supply.
They're not approved?
They're not doing it. Where's this well?
And we're going to do periodic inspections ourselves.
So you're going to go check it out?
Me.
Just in ourselves? You just drive by it every day, just.
Not me.
You drive by it every day, walk up in there and say, hey, I'm Leon. Show me your stuff. Let me see your well. Where's your crusher? Can I ignite your bombs?
Yeah. Basically, I thought that, he said you were going to put the crusher down pretty much in the lower area.
Go over here, yeah.
So make sure it's down there. Then I'll keep away some of the noise.
Okay, and any other comments on the part of the commissioners? Nope.
Good.
I just want to remind commissioners that if this is a legal application, in other words, if it meets all the requirements of our regulations and it's consistent with the PRCD, we have to vote yes. We cannot say, oh, well, you know, we're just, like, you know, whatever other reasons, you cannot use them, or history. You know, what happened to us in the past is irrelevant in this application. This application meets all the legal requirements, in other words, according to our, our original requirements. Everyone understands that, correct?
Yes, sir.
I understood that. But I'm only saying that we don't have to give a question to anybody.
No.
Right. We can improve this, you know, with the blasting, well, with the blasting and everything like that. I want to be really clear that we don't have to give a question to anybody.
But we can change this still.
No, I know, but I'm saying that, but I'm saying that I don't mind them questioning, because they'd be period, like, I don't know. I'm saying, as far as with zoning, we don't have to give a formal question to anybody. Like they're saying is, like, you know.
Can say no.
And the other things like you're saying about that, you know, this is an approved thing, and I understand what I'm saying is, if we get something that comes in front of us, we don't have to give a question permit to anybody. That's something that we, we grant.
Right.
So I just wanted to make that clear.
Is everybody clear?
Aye.
All right, then everyone is clear, then we shall adjourn to adjourn a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve EFP 2023-01 File 111. 125 Garter Road as drafted with today's provisions.
All right, I've motioned to approve in second.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All the way starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Riley, yes.
Mainy, yes. Westland, yes.
Okay. Leon.
Crushaway.
I'm going to approve.
I will say, though, that would be exciting if Leon pulled up onto these properties to, to a Leon report. Get a Leon report, a badge.
And Mr. Chairman, I made reference to the applicant's statement that they are preparing the site for future four-lot subdivision. So we do have a history.
Right.
Okay.
It's that part.
In the narrative.
Actually, I was not talking.
The resolution makes reference that the site's being prepared for a future four-lot residential. We're state, we're paving the way for residential development. All right, second, let's go to SEP 2023-03. This is the gas station convenience store on 846 Main Street. So you heard about this last evening, it was closed at that point. Rick, do you want to give us a quick rundown on the application? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the commission requested and the applicant agreed to the installation of emergency generator. Commission requested and the applicant agreed to providing decorative stone to the base of the canopy columns to complement the principal building. Commission requested and the applicant agreed on the installation of sidewalks along Pepper Street as well as along Main Street. And the only concern raised, obviously, which the commissioners are aware, was the left-hand turn. The police and fire have reviewed it. While it is problematic, they are in support of the report. Okay. Again, we're going to deliberate, I think five regular commissioners are on this, too.
I'll make a motion to approve SEP 2023-03 File 1654A as drafted.
All right, she has a motion, second.
Second, all right, you're all looking at me, so second?
All right, a motion and a second, not discussion. So you heard, Rick, all of the conditions and other discussion or questions on the gas station?
So, Rick, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Fire department nor the police department didn't have any problems with, with the design of that?
Oh, they're well aware of the concerns.
No, 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 I thought that from what I was told, and it was just told to me, that they had concerns about driveway heading to Pepper Street.
Oh, that.
And how was that resolved?
The concerns were discussed, but the consensus was not to report any, any changes to the full commission.
So what was their concerns?
No, their concerns about the overall traffic and circulation issues that are currently taking place in the community right now. They're well aware of it, just like you raised the left-hand turn coming out. They realize that that can happen. But the fact remains that they're in support of the conclusion of the traffic report. That it can work as long as the.
So they didn't have a problem with safety?
No.
So from what I was, I don't know, it was just brought to me, and I didn't even say it to somebody, because I had to talk to them about something else, and that came up. And they said that they had problems with the Pepper Street exit and entrance or something like that.
No, as a matter of fact, we brought up the sidewalks.
Yeah.
And how that we're encouraging the pedestrian traffic in there. And, and Mr. Chairman, that's why when we, the commission discussed the traffic report, I like to hear the comments from the commission and the public, and then I have my meeting with the police, fire, and engineering.
Okay, we don't get a report from them at all?
Only when they have a concern. Oh, you get an oral report from. Any other questions or comments, deliberations? If not, I'll call the rules, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, no.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainy, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, so we got passes. 845. All right, and last deliberations and determinations is 205 Monroe Turnpike. This is the new grocery store that's going to go in behind Panera Bread and Noble Gas. Rick, do you have modifications on that? Yes, the commission requested and the applicant agreed to the pedestrian walkway from the medical office to the grocery store. That's important for the overall circulation. Sidewalks are being provided up until the Aldi's grocery store. The electric, electric vehicle charging stations are going to be provided. They're going to distribute it evenly between the medical and the Aldi's. Commission requested and the applicant agreed to do the screening on the dumpster, although it's internally, where the loading dock is. Both the architectural review board and the commission requested the enclosure, and that was also agreed upon. And architecturally wise, the commission was pleased with it, so there are no changes there, and I think that is it. The dark sky compliant, because we have the residences in the back. A combination of, of the plantings and the dark sky compliant. The lights do go off, I think the commission is aware. You do have motion detectors, that's needed for today's society. But the lights do go off, but the motion detectors will trigger that. The residents in the back are going to obviously be, are going to watch that, but the applicant's well aware of that. That is all, Mr. Chairman. All right, shall adjourn a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve SCP 2018-03A3 File 158A as drafted.
Hey, I have a motion.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the rules, starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Mainy, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Condon, yes.
Congratulations, everyone. We have three, we have a few minutes. Next.
We have three, we have a few minutes to do next. Um, all seven minutes later here. To approve, we have May 4th. So on May 4th, we have, uh, all members of the commission here, shall I adjourn a motion to accept these, uh, May 4th?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from May 4th.
Second, second, uh, are there any changes or discussion? If not, call the rules, standing on my left.
Westland, yes.
Mainey, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Condon, yes?
Okay, pass it, May 4th.
That means May 18th.
Shall I adjourn a motion to accept the minutes of May 18th as drafted?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from May 18th.
Motion, um, there's a correction on page two, uh, the motion was made by a Wetland, should be Westland. What?
Typer.
Typer, okay, drive second. Second, anyone? Uh, second, okay, call the rules, starting on my right. Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainey, yes. Westland, yes.
Okay, that means of June the first, motion passes 5R. June the first, 2023, radio and meeting. And all five commissioners. So I think, um, um, isn't he here? So it must have been the call.
Yes.
Oh, Donald wasn't here.
Well, we can vote on it with just four members, we wouldn't waste one of their.
So we'll, uh, adjourn a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, June first meeting minutes as drafted.
All right, motion, second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All of those, well, uh, all call on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, so that's that. Any new applications?
Yeah, as, uh, discussed earlier, Mr. Chairman, staff has received six new applications in the last two weeks. The commission is continuing the age restricted district text amendment to July 6th. We are continuing the 10 and 36 Main Street, which we just heard tonight, to July 6th. We have four applications regarding Starbucks at 255 Monroe Turnpike. Uh, excuse me, three. Uh, text amendment allowing, uh, the, a parcel within the MDD on 0.9 acres instead of the full acre of 43,560. The actual zone change, which includes the conceptual plans like we saw tonight for the Main Street and the actual detailed plans, I guess.
So these are going to like.
Yes. All right, this is the first time that you'll be doing all concurrently. The, um, fourth application is the text amendment in accordance with the court case for the filling, excavation and filling. Now we have, uh, another filling and grading for 260 Spring Hill Road. And we have a, a new SCP for Connecticut Precast.
Ooh.
It was, it was told to staff that we should. Oval's first four to July 6th, along with the two, that get continued. And those two new ones to go to the next meeting. Now, Mr. Chairman, we only have one meeting in July.
Well, you can do them, if we're going to do the three on the one side, they should, they should go pretty quick, yeah. Those three are tied together.
So you want to do them all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't realize we're breaking them down to three, but, no, it's one presentation, we'll do all.
All right, if there's a need to have a special meeting, you're down to one meeting in July in August with the summer season. We'll, we'll do a special meeting, okay? All right, the applicants will be pleased to hear this, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so that's good.
They're all done one night. I don't have to go.
All right, anything else from, uh?
Business, that's it.
Okay. Is, uh, August the 3rd, that's our meeting?
Yes.
That will be it. Are you going to be here August 3rd?
Yes.
Good job.
Okay.
What are you doing?
I did the new applications and I have, I want to go over the zoning regulations, subcommittee, uh, meeting schedule. Oh, yes, and as we discussed.
Right.
It appears that June 27th. Now, that is, this, that will be without the chairman in attendance. Or the next meeting after that will be July 3rd, that's Monday before July 4th.
Free on July 3rd.
The chairman will be back.
I'm not here July 3rd.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't think a lot of people are going to be around on July 3rd.
I'm away. If we could just do it the two of us.
Are you fine without the chairman on the 27th?
27th.
We gotta meet a couple more times, uh.
That means I have to.
I'm not here the 27th either.
Who's on that commission? You.
You.
Rob.
Ron.
Leon and the chairman.
On the four of us.
You four.
One, two.
Three. And four?
So the 27th.
I gotta run it, so that's fine, I just got to make sure.
So the 27th, I mean, at 5 p.m.
27th, we're doing? Is it Thursday?
Yeah.
No.
So we're not doing the Thursday.
No, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to work out, it's going to be tough.
June 27th, 4th of July is on the next day.
That's a Tuesday, right?
We're going to be away.
June 27th, yes.
I'll make sure I make a long weekend out of it, no?
5 p.m.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm going to do an A R B meeting that night too at 7, so that'll work out pretty good.
Out of here, five. Should we go from one to the other?
Yeah, same table, so.
Maybe I'll stay? I might, I might stay for both.
But Rob?
You're not even moving.
Oh, okay, so we have, Mr. Chairman, we have three members for the 27th. We need to meet again in, uh, in July too, so.
They put the actual title?
We'll take that up at the, uh, on the 6th. All right, that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in favor, so. First, motion passed.